All right, I'm gonna start us up in the hope that he'll.
He should be coming in just a second.
Yeah, that our third member will arrive soon. I'll just get us started. I hereby call the order this August seventeenth meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board. This meeting is being held remotely and in the event that we have technical difficulties, we'll continue this meeting to September seventh, which I believe is our next regularly held meeting at six o'clock. My name is James Arbus. I'm the vice chair of the planning board and I'll be acting chair tonight as our usual chair Jesse Belcher Tim has recused himself. Before I begin, I'd like to ask, is there anyone here that would like to speak to something that is not on our agenda tonight? You can use star six or star nine to raise your hand. And if you can also wave visually in video or if all that fails, you can unmute and say anything. This is something that is not on our agenda. Cruising here to see if anyone is indicating they want to speak.
I saw, yeah, I saw a hand up from Molly, Molly Rapalas and I can set you up to unmute there, Molly, one second.
Sorry, I missed seeing that. Thank you, Jeff. As soon as he's got you set, you can go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. This comes back to June of last year. It was a fall that I had on forty five Cherry Street in East Hampton. And the, the letter that I had attached, it's to Mr. Belcher Timmy. And it describes, it gives in detail the circumstances around the fall. And itself, it's self-explanatory. If you don't, I think because I submitted it late, everyone, the you obviously haven't had a chance to, to look at it.
Did you stay around the fall? I'm sorry, I'm having trouble. What, what is that about?
It was a fall that I had in June of last year. On a fall on forty five Cherry Street.
Oh, that's terrible. I'm sorry to hear that, sir.
Yeah. And of course, I would release the names of the people who had witnessed the fall. But for obvious reasons for privacy considerations, not to. And the, the father or the husband, he supplied bandages at that time to help stem the bleeding. It happened on the, it happened on Cherry Street and I compared where I was, where I was, where I fell. And also in terms of the, the proposed project that you're currently working on with the Department of Public Works, I assume. It was the, it was a combination of on the sidewalk, but I also fell onto the pavement of that road. And in the process, I may have broken a couple of my teeth, maybe three teeth and reason why I kept this in the back burner unfortunately is because of COVID and not having the opportunity to speak in, in person. Except up until now. So the I, back in last month, back in June, actually, I provided a package of photos and additional written details that essentially is just a carbon copy of what I, what I'm speaking to now. And the before and after engineering drives for the proposed reconstruction of Cherry Street. And and I also wish to point out that in speaking with the same couple that had witnessed my fall, somebody had fallen by their house. Not on that particular day, but it was on forty five Cherry Street. That's where they live. And the person who fell had broken their shoulder by their house. So right now, I'm putting final details together on my claim. And, and so doing, I'm being very selective of, of who to choose. Because I've had dental work done in my, done in, in my past. I decided to get pricing from, from an orthodontist and a dentist. I don't know if one is the same as the other.
I wouldn't know, Mr. Rapalas, I have to ask because I really want to find out if there's a way to help. Is there something that you want the planning board to act on here? Is this in relation to something that's coming before us? And I also see Jeff, your hand up. So you want to add to that?
I was gonna add on real quick, Mr. Rapalas, I, what you're raising are really significant issues and it sounds like it was a terrible experience you had. I would say that I think at the moment, I don't think the planning board has jurisdiction over what you're concerned with. The planning board is not, is not involved in the creation of those sidewalk improvement plans. So maybe we could talk tomorrow or Thursday about, I think I want to get you to a more appropriate person in, in City Hall. I don't think the planning board is the body at this point who would, would have any control over this. But I, what you're raising is a serious issue that I want to try to help get you to the correct people. But I think if you're talking about filing a claim, which it sounds like it has a lot of legitimacy, it would, it wouldn't really involve the planning board. So I would like to get you to the correct people. And I, I think the letter to Mr. Belcher Timmy, I don't know that I've ever seen it and I don't know that it made it to the planning board. So you know, there was some miscommunication there, but I would recommend that we try to talk offline. I don't think the planning board would have the ability to hear the matter. I think it's going to be DPW or human resources department and our, and our insurance company. It sounds like the city has, has some things that we should talk to you about.
Oh, okay.
Is that how?
Yeah, it certainly, it certainly will. As, as a matter of fact, I, there is a DPW meeting next week that is going to specifically discuss the, your, the project and maybe it would be appropriate to speak at that time, but.
I would still recommend getting together with Jeff at your earliest convenience. He'll point you in the right direction. And you know, while it's clearly something that's outside of our bailiwick, you know, on a personal level, I'm sure I speak for the rest of the world. Real story that happened. We hope it's healing well. We probably better move on now. We have a lot on our agenda tonight.
I bet you do.
Molly, do you have my telephone number? Do you want to have a pencil? You want to take my telephone number? Or give me my direct line? You can give me a call tomorrow.
Yeah.
Four, four, one, three.
Four, one, three.
Yep, five, two, nine.
Five, twenty-nine.
One, four, zero, six.
One, four, zero, six. Okay, very good.
Great.
All right. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight?
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Be well, Mr. Rapalas. Nothing else? I'm not seeing anyone. Anyone see any hands?
Me.
Oh, there's a me. All right, go ahead.
I, I just don't, I'm still new to this. I'm sorry.
Don't worry.
Now you guys are talking about the brewery today, but there's a lot of land next to the brewery. Will that be covered in this also because he kind of uses both in between? Or is that a total separate? I mean, he's got a motocross track up there. He's got.
Well, that's part, yeah, that's definitely something that will come up, I'm sure, as a part of this and you'll have an opportunity to public speak. Any relevance it has to the current project.
Okay, because it's not on that, that the paperwork.
Yeah, we will talk about that when it comes.
I think it's not really his property, but that can be added to the other then?
Yeah, that's, that's definitely on the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, anyone else?
Just as a point of order, if I could ask, could I get the, the full name and address of the speaker?
Kathy Trueheart. Thirteen Fort Hill Road.
Okay, got it. Thank you. And anybody else providing public comment during the course of tonight's meeting? If at least at the first time you speak, if you wouldn't mind just identifying yourself for the record for future minutes, I would very much appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
No, that's a good question. It's a very good question that you asked. Is there anyone else? I think we may have hit it all this time. And we can begin. I don't see any minutes to go over, which brings us to the one and only item we have in our agenda tonight. Public hearing for Eric Burson seeking to amend a two thousand seventeen special permit under section twelve point seven of the East Hampton zoning ordinance to expand operations at Fort Hill Brewery located at thirty Fort Hill Road in an industrial zoning district. Is there anyone here to speak about this?
So I am here, Attorney Peter Lane, Fierce Bloomberg, Gom and North Hampton. I'm here on behalf of Eric Burson's seventeen seventy-six Brewing and the adjacent property owner, Birch Family Farm LLC.
Okay, welcome, Attorney Lane.
Thank you.
Do you have a presentation for us tonight?
A bit. And it begins by conceding that there are currently not complete plans in front of the board. And frankly, what we intend to do overall is seek a continuance to continue working with city planning and submitting complete plans that address all historic and intended future uses of both lots where the brewery is and next door, the Birch Family Farm LLC property. The the current submission covers four areas of concern. But as I've said, we concede that currently these plans are not addressing even all the current uses of the land. So I'd be happy really to just say that I can address whatever questions the board might have. Gary Swanson, the engineer hired by seventeen seventy-six Brewing is also present and can certainly answer technical questions. But I just hope for the opportunity to educate the board and the public a bit about what Mr. Burson's plans are. And then also take the opportunity for us to be educated by the board about what your concerns might be and how we can address them.
Okay, let's talk about process then for a little bit, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
I'd like to alert all of you to the fact that this is a special permit. A special permit requires four planning board members in order to vote successfully. You have to have a vote of at least four out of the five in order to vote on denial or approval of a special permit application. We currently have three here, myself, Perry and Danny, which means we cannot vote on whether or not we would approve or deny, which means we have to continue no matter what happens at the end of this meeting. My recommendation to you is you've clearly just indicated there is no complete plan would be to kind of walk through what the intention is that you have to the best of your ability, maybe with Mr. Swanson's help. And then I'd like to read in some of the correspondence that has been sent into the city. Some of the relevant materials and then open it to the public to let them speak and get their input and have our goal tonight. The planning board isn't going to deliberate tonight. We're not going to respond to the input. We're going to listen to it. We're going to take it in and figure out when our next meeting is going to be. And then we can hopefully have you respond to everything you heard tonight and come up with a plan of action. Does that sound appropriate for you, Attorney Lane?
It sounds very appropriate. Thank you.
Then I'll let you take it with a basic walkthrough of what you want to do.
Great. So seventeen seventy-six Brewing is during the COVID period has expanded outdoor dining. So there is dining space now on the blacktop. And to offset the, the loss of parking space, they have expanded parking in a gravel area that stretches to the back of the property and now does extend onto the adjacent land owned by Birch Family Farm. There's a lease between the two entities allowing that use. I understand that that is something that we're going to have to apply for a permit for retroactively at this point. And that the concerns of city planning in particular that are an application addressing stormwater. And that would be our first intention. I think the other area of concern is that the plans submitted so far are not indicating the the containers at the back of the property that are storage containers. They're essentially international shipping containers. They are raised off the ground. Mr. Swanson can speak to concerns about any interference with stormwater drainage, but they are off the ground. And they are there at the moment storing empty cans that will be later used for packaging for the retail sale of beer. So there too, if there's any need for permit application retroactively, it will be made. Again, tonight, if there's more questions about that, I'm sure Mr. Swanson can address them. The the other areas of concern seem to be about what's going on on the Birch Family Farm property next door. So at the moment, Mr. Burson's uses that land again by permission. That land is owned by his family, by the Birch Family Farm LLC. With permission, he's using it for personal, personal use where he does have an area for BMX bikes and another area that he would hope to use for motorcycle riding. He doesn't have any intention of opening that up commercially for public use. But again, there too, I believe the uses that he would like to, to make of it would either be allowed as of right or by permit application. And either way, we would do whatever is necessary. But again, there's no intention of opening that up to commercial enterprise for public use just for personal use. I believe those are the four issues that are of greatest concern.
I'm guessing we have a ton of questions already. I sure know I do.
And I just want to also say that those were the four issues that were the subject of a passed order and are currently the subject of enforcement action that the city took. We have conferred with Attorney Tanner. We've entered into a standstill agreement with Attorney Tanner in the city to just put that litigation on hold and have promised that we will either be in compliance by September thirtieth or at least have submitted all of the appropriate documentation and permit applications by September thirtieth. And so that's why your, I guess, lack of forum and our intentions are combining perfectly this evening for a continuance so that we can submit a full plan and all necessary permits by September thirtieth. So if there's more questions, then I'll answer what I can. Otherwise, I'll turn things over to Mr. Swanson to discuss the technical issues.
Go ahead, Mr. Swanson.
Can you hear me now, as they say?
Yes.
I prepared a plan which was only included the brewery property. And I think this raised a certain amount of consternation within the planning department. Because a lot of the issues have to do with the adjacent eight acres. Back in July, when we met with Attorney Tanner and your planning group, we worked out a schedule. See, I can't do my work until I get the survey. We are using Holmberg and Howe of East Hampton for the surveyors on, as a surveyors on the property. The problem is that they're booked up solid. I was just on the phone with yesterday afternoon with Emily Holmberg. She assures me that she can get her field work done on that property, which will show what the additional parking area is, the gravel areas. These were all things of concern. You know, outside the property of the seventeen seventy-six brewery. This field survey will be done. I've been assured by the end of this week. All that information has to be taken off in their office. I'm hoping to get it, you know, before the end of the month. At which time I will be able to present a plan to your department. And I'd like to meet with the department while I'm doing this as well to make sure that they're satisfied. It will show all of the changes and what's proposed and how I'm going to handle, propose to handle the stormwater runoff. Once I get the field information from the surveyors and I expect to have that completed by the end of September, which is that September thirty date we're talking about. And I believe that's also included in the what is it, the hold still agreement or whatever it was.
Is that basically stating therefore that you believe the two of you that October is probably the earliest you'd want to meet again after gathering all the data from this meeting?
Yes.
All right, did you have anything more, Mr. Swanson?
I think the best thing to do is I can answer questions as they come up.
Okay.
Technical questions.
All right. So there's definitely a lot on the table here. And like I said, we're going to try and avoid deliberating. I'd like to just, I would like to ask some questions. I'd like to see if the board has some questions and I'd like to read a few statements. I'm going to start with some of the statements in an effort to provide an additional background. First, I want to say that it's pretty unorthodox, I think, to file a special permit application without the plans ready to go. I think we all need to acknowledge that. There's a lot that's unorthodox about what's happening here. However, it's my personal opinion and we're going to, you know, take it from the way to the board and hear from the public that finding compliance is the key issue and working together to build harmony in this between everyone, all the stakeholders is probably for the best. So I personally tend to move in, will tend to move in that direction. But I think it's important to acknowledge it's a little odd that the plans weren't ready to go when this is filed. But that's all I'm going to say about that. I'd like to talk a little bit about those.
To respond to that.
I, I mean, absolutely, if you want, although realistically, it's probably best done at the next meeting, but it's your call, Mr. Swanson.
How about this? I'd like to respond to that.
Go for it.
And here's what I'd like to say. We acknowledge the unorthodoxy. As I'm sure you're aware, I've come into this in like the last seven days. And I think Mr. Burson's was attempting to deal with a situation that was getting increasingly more complicated for him. And I think there was an intention to address the issues raised in the order by getting to the planning board. I'm just going to acknowledge on my client's behalf, it was probably a touch hasty. And now that we're here, however, and there is this much public concern, we felt it more appropriate to just appear today, lay it all out on the table, hear from the board, hear from the public and then ask for the continuance. So we acknowledge the unorthodoxy. But what we're here to do is to work with the board, city planning, the neighbors in harmony to, to achieve permitted or legally allowed uses of the land.
I appreciate that statement. Thank you very much. Let's talk about, I'm just gonna talk about kind of what I know and just kind of put it in the record. I know that over the past three years, the city's initiated three enforcement orders with regard to Fort Hill Brewery and regarding changes to the adjacent lot. The city issued the most recent enforcement on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Had consultations with the applicant about a timeline to prepare all relevant information to address questions and concerns regarding the properties. In July of twenty twenty-one, the city sought an agreement with the applicants to stay enforcement and provide additional time for the applicant to work in good faith to prepare plans and an application. On or about July ninth, twenty twenty-one, the applicant refused to sign the agreement and on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, the city filed suit against the applicant in Superior Court after the applicant failed to enter into an agreement with the city to remedy the situation. Also on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, the applicant submitted this special permit addressing two of the items, as you stated, identified under the enforcement order and to request permission for additional outdoor dining. I just want to encapsulate that stuff that you've already discussed. It's kind of, you know, my take on it. So that when you review what I've said next meeting, we can make sure we're all on the same page. I have some of those letters that I'll be reading into record today. But the next thing I want to touch on is to kind of talk about the, the items that you discussed and I'll kind of go in reverse order, I think. The, one of the big issues that strikes me is the fact that, as you stated, the additional eight acres is not, wasn't in this. It seems clear to me that it's essential that it is. And there's kind of a little bit of a problem there because that eight acres extends the boundaries of this special permit property. And that means that notifications for this very meeting should potentially have been expanded and broadened. So I think that it is essential. And it's just my opinion and I want to, you know, look to hear from Harry and Danny on this, but I think it's essential that that be added into the special permit. You know, perhaps it's something we can vote to amend next meeting, but those, those are butters. They need notification. I, I, I think that's, I think that's just a no brainer. Harry, Danny, do you have any feelings on that?
No, I agree. It's logical, James. I, I second your, your opinion on it.
Harry?
I never seen anything like this in my life on a board for thirteen years. I've never seen it like it. Guys are total violator for three years and all of a sudden now he comes back and wants to put the premises to clean everything all up. Oh, it just, I don't know. I'd never seen it like it.
Fair enough. I saw Curtis's hand up. Curtis?
If, um, if it's the applicant's intention to amend the special permit to include the second parcel, parcel one, three, one dash, two, three, which doesn't have a formal street address that runs to the south of thirty-four Hill Road. Um, from the planning department's perspective, and Jeff, you can correct me here, I would certainly accept an email that states that. And I will then send out a second round of a butters notifications. Um, that would cover the regulatory requirement and then the newspaper ad that was placed for this originally. My expectations that we, would that stand or Jeff, should we issue a new one?
I think, I, I think as long as we're all under the same impression that this is for the brewery. So if we're talking about the brewery use and the parking going over the property line onto the other parcel associated with the brewery, I think it's acceptable to just read notice because that's the part that people didn't get. And then, you know, the, the butter's notification goes from property boundaries. But I, the reason why I'm saying this is because I think it's, it's distinguishable from any other use that would occur on the eight acres. Because to date, there is, there's no information about the other uses. And I think that that would trigger a different application. So as long as we're talking about the brewery, that was what was advertised and operations of the brewery, I think we can. And operations of the brewery, I think we can expand the butters notice to the adjacent parcel. And I think that's within the realm of what we've noticed. But adding additional uses on that adjacent parcel, I think, would be a different conversation. So if we need to have that tonight, we should, but um, if I'm clear, it's attached to the brewery use. And I think that encapsulates what we've noticed originally.
I, I, I understand completely. Attorney Lane?
Uh, could I suggest, and I guess I'm, I'm asking what you all think? So, uh, certainly the, uh, I believe the, the containers and the parking are brewery uses that are currently extending on to, um, the eight acres. Um, and, uh, so it's, if I understood what Jeff Bagdad just said, then certainly uh, Mr. Wyman will get an email saying that it's our intention to amend, uh, and that we absolutely agree to, um, uh, expanding, uh, the, the notice so that all the butters to the eight acres, I get that notice as well. Would it make sense though, that if we're talking about other uses on the eight acres that are not specific to the brewery? That there be an addition, like an additional application by the owner of the eight acres? Um, but that it run parallel to this, uh, this application?
I think you're talking about for the use of the BMX park or forgive my terminology.
Yeah, the, 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 the pedal park or the pump track, uh, which is for the BMX bikes and, uh, potentially, um, a motocross track, again, for personal use, not for public commercial use.
I would agree. That would be a separate special permit, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I would agree. And I think as P, I think what Pierre was alluding to is that since we're not talking about continuing for just two weeks, we're talking about a month and a half, there's enough time to generate another legal ad and, and combine the two meetings together in October. I think that's reasonable.
Great.
Okay. Alright, so it looks like we don't have any issues with that and we're putting that on the table and it definitely needs to be on the table. Um, okay, there's a lot more. Um, there's talking about things like the parking. There's talking about things like the stormwater, which you also brought up and the change in, in, in spacing. Certainly things like live music. I think what we're gonna do, I, I wanna just note to you that these are all things that will come up as you would expect in a normal special permit process. Since we can't really deliberate tonight, I don't want to, as a board, dig too deep into them unless Harry or Danny have a specific message they wanna say. I'd like to read in the letters and hear from the public. And then in the end, maybe we can just make sure that we tossed off a few items for you so that you know what to bring to the table in the next meeting. Yeah, I'll start by talking about some of the enforcement orders, I think, because we already, um, we already looked at that. I have one here. Now, a lot of this is in the public record, uh, and I, I, I'm gonna paraphrase sections of it because there's so much material. Um, and I recommend to everyone that's here, everyone that watches this on video, that they go to the city website to find these materials. Curtis, can you tell us where, uh, all of this correspondence can be found?
Yes, I'm just gonna pull this up right now and point of fact. Give me just a second.
Yep, I'll give him a moment for him to do that. I wanna make sure everyone has access to all the documents.
So everything's available on the planning depart, the planning board's website. If you go to that URL there, um, in the center of the page, about halfway down, there's a, a header that says agendas and minutes. And there, you can navigate either to the city's agendas and minutes portal, or there's a link directly below it that says, you know, view current agenda. Um, uh, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, and that shows you tonight's agenda. Then the public comments can be found at the bottom, at the bottom right of that same planning board page. Uh, that says view current plans and applications. There's two categories beneath that, view twenty twenty-one applications and view twenty twenty applications. Twenty twenty-one, uh, includes all of our current applications. Uh, you're looking for Fort Hill number thirty. Um, and then under Fort Hill number thirty, there's a folder called correspondence that includes all public correspondence submitted, uh, for tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. So the first thing I wanted to read into record are some snippets of, um, a letter that was dated May seventeenth from the Office of the Building Commissioner. Uh, from, uh, which was attention Mara Burson's, uh, that came from, uh, the city solicitor. Now, the city solicitor identifies themselves and then goes through what's attached in the email, uh, which are some enforcement orders. I recommend you all go look, book this, but I'd like to read into record the enforcement orders uh, that were discussed. And then order number one was on November seventh, two thousand nineteen, enforcement order was issued to seventeen seventy-six brewing company LLC CEO, Mr. Eric Burson's for assessors parcel one thirty-one, uh, hyphen twenty-three dot one and one thirty-one hyphen twenty-three by Carissa M. Lisi, the building commissioner at the time. This is the first order. And he provides an exhibit. And he says, it's my understanding that you have not brought these parcels into compliance is directed in enforcement order one. Saw or obtained other relief from the, uh, appropriate board. His enforcement order two, a second enforcement order was subsequently issued on December eighth, twenty twenty, to Birch Family Farm LLC for assessor parcel one twenty-one hyphen twenty-three by Joseph Mercy War. Forgive me if I'm mispronouncing that. The building commissioner for the city, second order, it gives an exhibit. It's my understanding that you've not brought that parcel into compliance is directed in enforcement order three, saw or obtained for relief from the appropriate board. And then enforcement order three. As stated above, you're currently in violation of orders one and two, each of which he attached. I recommend everyone look at this. The following acts or actions have occurred on the property is detailed and he attaches an exhibit sixteen hyphen seventeen. Uh, additionally, he's included a GIS map which depicts the property lines and the work which has occurred. Uh, each of the, uh, for, he says forging. I'm not sure if that's a typo. Each of the forging acts particularly described in the exhibit constitutes an unlawful deviation from the permits or work, uh, which is completely in violation of the zoning ordinance. It's the city's position that as of May seventeen, twenty twenty-one, he gives an exhibit. You're in violation of the aforementioned permits and zonings, and they are, one, construction of a new parking area. Addition of around a hundred and fifty feet to a hundred and, uh, times a hundred and fifteen feet of paved area, seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, equaling approximately forty-three parking spaces plus an area along the north side of the building containing around twenty-two parking spaces. Item number two, placement of storage containers with total area of approximately two hundred feet by fifty feet, ten thousand square feet. Number three, construction of an unpermitted bicycle, uh, in quotes, he says pedal park. And number four, construction site work in support of, on new unpermitted uses. So I'm reading that into the record. There's more to it, uh, but I just wanted to put that in there. Um, let me just go back here and try to read another one into the record here. We have some correspondence um, that's come through. Um, I'll, I'll try and read a few of those, uh, into the record here. Today, we may read more into the record later. I'm assuming attorney Lane and then the public, you'll have access to all these and you'll go through all of them. Uh, and, and make sure that you have some commentary to them. I'm just gonna start with what's first here, uh, in our folder. Um, and let me just bring that up. This is a, a letter dated August sixteenth uh, to Fort Hill, uh, the East Hampton Planning Board, reason Fort Hill Brewing Company, seventeen seventy-six Brewing Company uh, for today's meeting. And it says, what my concerns are about this and other things. One, he wants to expand the amount of cars on the property where he's going to put them. As I see them parking, now they're using the other property next to them for the overflow parking. Question, 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 and a dog park on that side and a motocross track right next to Fort Hill Brewery building. So is both properties for the brewery, did they get permits for the fence and the track or even the dog park? Is there a permit for the parking on that lot also? I'm confused if they're using both. Why have we not been notified of this? Number two, doesn't he have a drainage section on the side of the brewery for a fire lane? He's having people park where, what, where that was? Question, question, is that what was on the drawings for before the meeting was agreed? Number three, what is going on with the big trailers on this property? Question mark. Number four, we were told that he was going to put up Plexiglas. That never happened. He has not done what he was supposed to do, uh, from before. Now he wants more, but never finished what he said he was going to do before the meeting. When is that stuff gonna be addressed? Think he should be in compliance before. He's allowed more things that he will not follow. I'm not gonna deliberate this, but I will add just a comment on that. So you know, attorney Lane. Two thousand fifteen, we discussed Plexiglas for, um, the side that was facing north. At that time, there was going to be outdoor, uh, music and we wanted to mitigate sound. In two thousand seventeen, he came back. There was a discussion about the prep Plexiglas that was brought up by, at the time, um, associate member Jim Valencourt. And the, the, the essential answer was that that had been taken away. There was no more Plexiglas to be put in because Mr. Burson's had assured the board that the new design in two thousand seventeen was going to have the music only inside. There was going to be no music outside as we discussed in two thousand seventeen. Therefore, the Plexiglas was taken off the table in the conditions uh, for the two thousand seventeen permit. I'm stating that from my perspective, there right now, there is no expectation of a Plexiglas thing because there's no expectation there will be outdoor music. That's where we left the two thousand seventeen permit. Just for your information. Number five, he says, um, there used to be a drainage along both sides of the road going down the hill on Fort Hill to keep off the road. Since his building has gone in, he took it off his side of road where he put in his driveway and never fixed it or put it back in place. If you notice now that the side of the road is getting ruined, what is happening with that? Number six, he's using the other property next to his field with the brewery as a motocross. It's going to make our home prices go down and the noise will medically affect us. Have you even looked at the effects that these have on people around motocrosses? Look in the newspapers, look at lawsuits, tweets, suits, I think he meant. Is the town going to pay us twice with the value of our homes as these that are on the street plus moving costs? And with a motocross comes street congestion. Look at barks and brews. When they do that, we have problems getting down the street just to go into our driveways. Also, what is the EPA laws on this impact to the water or the wildlife with the noise? The Arcadia is right there on Fort Hill. It stands at Pond right up the bridge. Their signs are on the trees all along Pond on Fort Hill. I'll add to this as well, attorney Lane, just to add to the list that it's certainly parking and traffic is certainly something that we're gonna wanna discuss. Okay, number seven. Also, have you looked at the license boards on the meetings of the complaints that Fort Hill has had on noise? Uh, on not following liquor license, et cetera. I really think you should be looking at the whole picture on every time you give him something to correct. He doesn't do that. Ask for more. This is from Kathy Trueheart from thirteen Fort Hill Road in East Hampton. And I'm sure you'll be given a chance to speak when we get to that point as well. Um, Kathy Trueheart, I, I wanna mention that we don't have unless it's happened in the last couple of years that I don't know about, uh, a noise ordinance here in East Hampton. We default to the state. Talking about noise in, in, in terms of, uh, just talking about it in general is something we'll wanna do, attorney Lane. But we recognize that the city has no noise ordinance of its own. Um, okay, I'm gonna go back and pick another one of these, um, to read. Again, like I said, I'm not gonna read them all tonight. You'll have a chance to public speak. I'll try to get more of them in our next meeting and, and hit piece by piece. If I missed yours tonight, I apologize. I'll do my best to get them all in. Uh, I'll just pick the next one on the list, uh, which is from fourteen, uh, fiction me fifteen Fort Hill Road. And I need to zoom it in a little. Bear with me. Okay, this is dated August sixteenth, two, it may concern the residents of Fort Hill Road. It says has, they mean have, have concerns about what the brewery is allowed to do. The owner continues to do things without a permit. We understand he wants to get approval for expansion work that he's already done. On the original plan, there was supposed to be a dedicated emergency lane on the east side of the building. Now there's a parking, uh, all along this dedicated emergency lane. Unfortunately, this business owner has not been a considerate neighbor. Initially, the business was only supposed to be a tasting room. It has now become a bar, a large one at that. Also, what gives with all the storage bins on the property? Now he's building this motocross track on the adjoining property. Again, he misinformed neighbors, indicating his intention was for it to be a bicycle course. We're concerned about house values. Please have him come into compliance before you grant him any leeway. Thank you. And I can't quite re, uh, there it is, Robert and Joyce, uh, Petstrisquist. Forgive me if I butchered that name. I'm hoping when you speak that I'll do a better, you'll help me do a better job of it. Um, I think two of them is probably good for now, uh, and I'll definitely be trying to read more in later. At this point, I wanna ask if members of the board have any specific questions that they wanna ask or things they want them to narrow in before we go to public speak. Harry, Danny?
No, I can't understand. Okay. No, nothing, nothing in particular. I, I guess there's kind of backtracking. I'm, as this, as a civil engineer, I'm really honed in on some of the plans. I know they're not final yet. And I understand that we haven't had any survey information on the abutting parcel. But would it be possible, um, Gary, is, is there any way, because I know it's not the most complicated site next door, just from me being over there, um. Could we like redline in what, where you're thinking these extra spaces are gonna go? I'm just gonna just kinda eyeballing, trying to see how this is gonna all infiltrate the additional stormwater for the additional impervious area of the containers and the, the pavement as well as the gravel. Um, and not create a point, uh, where you're gonna discharge water off site, which I believe would potentially be a different permit, right? Would that be a Niptys permit, uh, if you're gonna not infiltrate on site? So is there any way before, because I know you can just kinda like Blue Beam or, or, um, like a, like a PDF edit, just kinda sketch in generally what your thoughts are? Is that possible or am I?
Andy, I, I'd be more than happy to meet with you on this and go over the whole thing.
Okay.
I think it's a, it's a good idea because we are keeping the water on site. They wanna be able to demonstrate that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I do this kind of work too. So I, maybe I can have some ideas. I'd like to take a look at where your thoughts are and just um, because it does look like we're adding a lot of impervious area and it's a fairly flat site. So depending on where your perk tests are and what your infiltration rate is, um, just adding seventy foot extension to the swale on the west side. I don't know. I don't know if that's enough or not.
I would caution you, um, I, I, I love this idea. We need to get information, but mass open meeting law, it's really important that that any information that's transferred for the applicant be shared en masse. Um, for compliance there. So just make sure that whatever happens, that information is transferred in a public medium where it can be shared with everyone.
Okay, James, I'll, I'll probably just talk to you to make sure that it's in compliance and.
Curtis or Jeff for better.
My understanding, my understanding, and I, and I invite anybody to correct me on this matter, is that you could meet with any project representative. But that you'll be expected to relay an accurate, you know, the easiest way to do it is at the next public hearing to relay an accurate and complete summary of that dialogue. You, you don't have to get every noun right, but such that anybody from the board, from the public or from the applicant's team would get a reasonable and complete understanding of the conversations and any relevant information contained therein for the public hearing process.
Perfect.
And I don't mean to pile on too much, sorry. I, I don't mean to pile on. I, I wanna discourage that. I, I want, I wanna recommend that um, Danny asked a really good question. Um, if, if you wanna take another shot at clarifying your request, I think it needs to go to the applicant from this hearing and be brought back at the next meeting. I'm, I'm, I just, you know, Mr. Swanson did offer a meeting with staff. Um, to date, we have received no information that's kind of addressing that other parcel. So I would just not want you to meet, um, separately. I think it's gonna create more questions and issues than it will help. But I think you're, Danny, I think what you're asking is really appropriate. And I think maybe you can take one more shot at asking Gary and clarify the things that you're expecting. And then have that come back in October. I think that's gonna be a, a little bit cleaner, um, following mine, fall in line with our past practice a little more.
Okay, I'll take a shot at that. I, I see what you're getting at, Jeff. Um, so that my request was just to get a visual representation of, you know, uh, before we get the survey of just generally what the engineers' thoughts are in terms of the layout for um, what would be on the abutting property. And obviously, you know, we would caveat that with notes, right? That state that this is conceptual based off of no survey, but just where your heads at now from visually inspecting the site, walking it. I know you've got it, you guys have ideas of what you wanna do out there. And I think we could do what we call, you know, a napkin sketch or just you know, something of that nature. So the board and maybe the public can just get a, get an idea of where you're going prior to October. So we can kinda just, you know, just kinda see that and not have to wait so long to get final, final plans. Maybe get like a like a, kind of an intermediate plan. So.
Um, said. Is that possible?
That is possible. And, um, yeah, I, um, we can submit, we can submit that very quickly. We can submit that in the next few days, actually.
You know, if I, if I may.
Go ahead.
I did, I did meet, uh, back in, uh, two thousand seventeen for the first application. I did meet with Danny. We went over all of this as a working meeting. And I'm sure he reported all of what we went over to the department. And the same thing certainly would happen now. This is strictly of a working uh, meeting, so I can be sure that I'm satisfying all of the department's requests and needs, so we don't have to keep going back and wasting your time as well.
I think maybe, I think maybe what you're referring to is Dan Murphy is the city engineer.
Yeah.
Who you consulted with in twenty seventeen. I think that, and, and like Danny, unless I'm wrong, I think.
No, I'm, uh, this is my second month as a planning board. Definitely wasn't me.
Um, so one thing related to this, which I just want to make sure we, we, we move forward. I know the public wants to speak and I don't want to. But delay that, but um, I just want to clarify something before we move on, which is. The field work um, that Mr. Swanson noted is, is, is ready or close to underway, uh, maybe next week. Um, you know, it, it was pretty clear what you said was that the field work was on the adjacent parcel. And so one thing that um, it's a little bit related to what Danny was asking, but I think it's covered in the, the memo. Is that um, a- as of right now, we don't really believe that the plan that was submitted. Um, Gary, the plan that you submitted as the basis for the current application. Does not accurately reflect the conditions of the brewery site either. So I just want to be super clear before your uh, survey crew goes out is that they, they should be updating. The existing conditions for the brewery parcel. I just want to make sure that we're, we're leaving this meeting on the same page, because if, if you come in. On, in October without, without an accurate um, depiction of the brewery parcel, then I don't think we'll have progressed very far.
And I'd like to just add on to that with um, some homework that was done. Uh, by the planning department, excellent work, that there's kind of four items that they picked out. There, there may be more, but four that I can really hone in on for you. Uh, A, it doesn't show existing striked in or available parking, including the total number of spaces for customers or employees. Drive aisle with extensive gravel, et cetera. B, it does not show the areas of expanded gravel parking slash storage area at the site southwest where. It shows a dash line marking limit of gravel which ends around a hundred and thirty feet from the site southwestern edge. Existing gravel extends the proper line. C, does not show unpermitted uses on the abutting parcel one thirty-one hyphen twenty-three. Including gravel parking area, fenced open area, fenced bicycle park and outdoor motocross track. And D, it does not show the expanded gravel along the site eastern removal of existing washstone trench drain. And there's a new point five acre paved parking area that ends six feet from the site southeastern edge. Uh, existing gravel extends beyond the new paving and additional roughly twenty-three feet. Uh, southeast running roughly two hundred and seventy feet along the site southeastern edge, total of about two thousand thirty-four square feet. Thank you for that work, planning department, but that kind of gives you four points of specifically things that are missing. Is that helpful? I hope.
Extremely, uh, all of which will be addressed in the amended submissions.
Okay, good. Uh, let me just take a quick peek here to see. You know, we've covered some, a lot of the basics. I think that um. Uh, the details of the approved site plan, that, there are some things also that I want to note. Again, some work by the planning department that were expected in the two thousand seventeen site plan. That were questioning, where are they on the new plan? One was a dumpster at the site southwest. Uh, another is the landscaping, striping and pavement islands in the parking area behind the brewery. Uh, another, the third one is a pole mounted lights along the site northwestern and southwestern edges. And then there's the thing about, uh, I'm just gonna let that one, we already talked about the Plexiglas, that doesn't belong, so. Um, so we're hoping that you'll specify the total quantity of off-street. Parking spaces on a site after changes to paving gravel and blueprint footing. Uh, clarify the use of the unpermitted expanded parking in the adjacent. Uh, parcel relative to the brewery operations and our special events. Uh, the application narrative suggests a rental parking agreement in response to the additional outdoor dining. Since this request seeks to add and formalize the outdoor dining, the rental agreement and use the additional parking is germane here. Um, clarify the total quantity of patron seating on site between the three thousand five hundred and thirty-four square foot area identified. In the two thousand seventeen decision and the three thousand one hundred and sixty-two square feet of the new patio for the purposes of determining total onsite parking required. Also provide information about the design and construction of the outdoor patio, including patron access points proximity to driving aisle. And lastly, clarify whether parking spaces remain on the northern side of the brewery following construction of the proposed patio. Based on the submitted plan, the drive aisle will shrink to fourteen feet adjacent to the patio. The board may wish the applicant to remove the spaces. We'll have to figure that out. Uh, in the immediate area to allow for two lanes and twenty-four feet of travel alongside the site of the brewery. What I'm reading here is a document that is in the materials, I think that was sent to you. I believe it was sent to you, Attorney Lane. Uh, by the planning department. Um, is that correct, Curtis? This memorandum was sent to them? Yes. So you have access to it? Um, yeah, I see you saying yes. It's lip reading. It's amazing. Uh, so.
You're talking about the August twelfth memo?
Yes, the memo. So I mean, you have this information. I, I think I'm just kind of restating that it is important to us and kind of indicating to the public. Admittedly fast, we have a lot to go through in this video. We'll be online when East Hampton Media posts it, so you can go through it and slow me down a little bit. Uh, but these are all items that we're gonna want to cover. Uh, Jeff, Curtis, Danny, Harry, do you have anything that you want to add to give them the list before we open it to the public?
Are there, uh, Gary, to, to get survey along Fort Hill Road? Cause I remember in the uh, the correspondences that Jeff read earlier, there was a claim that, that the swell along Fort Hill Road was. Was uh, either damaged or removed. Uh, if the survey could get shown that that's still there, I think that that. Would either um, you know, support or disprove that claim and then just show that the drainage coming off of the proposed roadway. I know you've got the riprap trench in there. Um, but once it hits the tree line, we don't quite see what's, where it's gonna go, to make sure it's just not gonna flood that road, you know? Um, from an engineering standpoint, if that swells there, that. Probably should be sufficient enough to capture the stormwater coming off of that and then that would um. Perhaps put that one uh, point to rest that was brought up earlier. Is that something that, that you could get your survey crew to get a couple shots out there and just so we can just get the, the data that shows that?
Is that to Mr. Swanson?
I, I, I believe, yes, we, that's possible. I'm just not clear on what the problem is along the. Site of Fort Hill Road. Apparently there's supposed to be a riprap trench that the city maintains.
It was, it was just brought up in one of the correspondences that James was reading earlier, that there was a claim that. The, the swell is, is, that was there at one point is no longer there, not functioning. So I think if we just had data that showed, you know, some survey data that shows what the contours actually are out there. Um, it would just simply put that point to rest, or if it shows that it's deficient, then you know, maybe it's something that. You know, as a, a civil engineer would want to look at, proper stormwater of the site.
So I think that's.
We need to talk about it further.
I'm just simply requesting to get some survey shots, since you're gonna have the crew out there. I don't think it's an additional really cost or time effort. Once you've got a crew mobilized out there, just get, you know, a dozen shots, get center a trench, top a bank. And run it up and down, you know, just along the property line along Fort Hill Road and just get a bunch of shots and then see what the contours look like.
And your concern is, is uphill of the driveway or downhill or both?
Both, just to make, just to establish that, that you're conveying the water, that the water is being conveyed through the swell along the side of the road. And not just running into the road like. Like was mentioned earlier, with the correspondent, when we were reading the correspondence, that's all.
Excellent. If you have further questions on that, um, I think we might be able to kind of pinpoint where that is. Maybe Curtis or Jeff can, can help as well. Um. Okay, anything else? All right, that's awesome. Uh, I think I only have one thing I want to mention before I open this to the public, and that is. There was the last permit, special permit that was approved in two thousand seventeen had six conditions. Just want to read them so that they're in the record before I go forward. Again, you can find this information online, but this is what we expected to have been done. Uh, and those conditions were number one, twenty-five parking spots, including three handicap spaces will be paved. The tuminous or cement concrete material in front of the building, including driveway access, the paved service should be graded and drained. As disposed all surface water accumulation. Two, all parking spaces will be striped and marked. In handicap spaces, we marked in accordance with the traffic rules and orders of the city of East Hampton. Uh, driveway reflectors we place at the end of the driveway adjacent to Fort Hill for outdoor amplified music should be. See, it says here we said outdoor, so that's interesting to me. I may have to go back to the. I may have to go back to the um, minutes, because maybe I'm misremembering, but it does say. Outdoor amplified music shall be limited between the hours of two PM and eight PM. Um, so it, it may well be, and I'm putting this out to you, um, Attorney Lane, that my own memory of that meeting in two thousand seventeen is, is flawed. And that we did bring up again, the uh, concept of the Plexiglas shielding. Uh, potentially facing uh, in the direction of, I think it would be west. Uh, so we may have to visit that, so please put that back on the table. I'm glad we read this. Fifteen applicant must raise high point in paved parking lot to an elevation of a hundred and fifty feet. Excuse me, a hundred and fifty-four feet, as noted on the stormwater plan dated April twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen. So the stormwater from the roof and parking area will be discharged onsite per the direction of the city engineer. And six, the applicant shall maintain the vegetative buffer between the patio and the parking lot in good condition. For the purposes of sound mitigation. That's gonna be another really important one, I guess. Okay. So I put those in, because those are the things we expect should be done. Uh, at this point, I'd like to open it up to public speak, but um, before I do, I just want to give um, some criteria. Again, because we don't have quorum, we're not gonna be deliberating tonight. So we're not really so much answering questions tonight. The goal of this is for you to pose questions that at the next meeting. We want the applicant to answer. Um, so with that caveat. Uh, and, and a request on my part that we not go too much beyond five minutes. Do we have anyone that wants to uh, proceed to speak? And I see the first hand up. I'm just going by what I see is Sam C.
Uh, hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Sam Sharon. I live at uh, one, two, eight Strong Street. Here in East Hampton. I respectfully request that the board simply not entertain Mr. Burson's application. Uh, I base this request not on the substantive merits of the application, though I'm sure there are things there that could be brought up. But upon Mr. Burson's history of non-compliance with reasonable regulation of activity on its property. Uh, it seems that uh, there are a lot of things that were placed in the special permits that have been granted conditions. Uh, with which Mr. Burson's has not complied, and uh, there are actions that he's taken. Um, without your permission, um, only to come back and ask for it retroactively. Um, you know, it's hard not to play this, you know, game in my head. What could I possibly get away with in my backyard? Uh, and then come before you to ask for permission. Um, I heard before, I think, uh, that, and, and, and I, I, I would need clarification. But I heard that there are sixty-five new parking spaces put in on the property. Uh, it was mentioned. Um, and if to the extent that's true, um, that's incredible. Um, it's incredible to me that someone would, um, would uh, take that level of activity before coming before this board. Um, you know, there's, there's, it's a two-way street. This board facility and city government generally uh, facilitates. Uh, a business and economic activity and the, and the person or entity being uh, regulated. Buys into it and cooperates, and that simply hasn't been um, as far as I can see, uh, what's, what's occurred here. Uh, so I would, I would hope that uh, with any new request that's brought, uh, that you simply not. Entertain it. Uh, Mr. Bearsen's uh, doesn't come with clean hands, as we'd say. He uh, he's in, in, not in non-compliance uh, on one hand, and then asking you for more on, on the other, doesn't seem. To make much sense. Uh, and with regard to the other things uh, with which he's out of compliance. Um, and those that are the subject of uh, a suit in Superior Court. I, I, and, and with all due respect to Attorney Lane, who I know is a, as a good guy and, and has a great reputation. Mr. Bearsens could say a lot of things and I wouldn't expect that he would do them. Um, and so I, I would, I would just suggest that an agreement is made by the city and Mr. Burson's in court. Uh, that have the strength of the court order, and if he doesn't comply, uh, you know, the city has the uh, ability to bring a contempt action. So I would, again, I would just ask that you not entertain this for now. Um, lastly, uh, I, I would hope that the city uh, and, and that the board would be. Uh, open to this would um, would consider a, a noise ordinance. None of, none of your conditions with regard to noise are um, are, are anything that could be um, enforced. Uh, how, how, how loud is it supposed to be? You could put up all the bushes or, or, or plastic you want. It, it, it doesn't, it doesn't uh, affect how loud something is in fact. So uh, I would hope that uh, the city would uh, adopt a. Uh, a noise ordinance that's based on uh, decibel levels um, in order to address um, you know, some of the noise complaints that have happened. Uh, that's up, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see some more hands up. Before I do them though, um, Sam C, I, I did fail to do one thing in my own due diligence here. Is it okay if I ask you um, your full name and address? Do we need?
I, I think I, I think I gave it, but I'll give it again. My name is Sam, first name Samuel, uh, C H A R R O N, uh, and I live at one twenty-eight Strong Street.
Thank you. I'm sorry if I missed it in the beginning. All right, I see some more hands up. Uh, I see next Owen Zarret.
Thank you, uh, Acting Chair Zarvis. Uh, my name is Owen Zarret. That's spelled O W E N Z A R E T. I live at seventy-four Florence Road here in East Hampton. Um, my comments probably doubled during your recent discussions, so I'll try to be brief, although those who. Know me, know they have a difficult time doing that. Um, so first of all, thank you uh, to the planning department, Jeff, Jamie, Curtis. Uh, for preparing the technical memo. I think it was exceptional, and I think that uh, it certainly speaks for itself, so. Um, I won't comment too much on what's there, because I think it's, it's, it's self-explanatory. Um, it does an excellent job of providing historical context for this property. Uh, the permitting process involved in a number of non-compliance issues. Uh, thank you, of course, to my colleagues, the planning board members for your introductions of this issue. Attorney Lane and Mr. Swanson, thank you for being here and for your remarks. Uh, Mr. Sharon, thank you for your uh, prior statements. Um, as many of you know, I don't usually attend these meetings to speak, but I feel compelled to. Uh, based on some of the, what I find to be relatively egregious issues involved uh, with this application. Um, first of all, I just wanted to say, I, I feel that this meeting, as it stands right now, based on the application that we had before us. Was convened by Fort Hill Brewer in bad faith. Mr. Sarvis, you made some exceptional points regarding the unconventionalities of this meeting. If this is an incomplete application, I recommend you consider declaring this hearing out of order. And closing the hearing, remove the item without prejudice. Let them bring back an appropriately submitted, complete application and convene another meeting. That's just my recommendation. We all need to play by the same rules here. To that end, what message are we sending the people in East Hampton? That managing issues and non-compliance is just to allow applicants to retroactively receive special permits to obviate them of any faults. How's this business even functioning at this point with multiple items and years of being out of compliance? I'm here representing constituents as a city councillor, also here as a concerned citizen. These constituents have expressed concerns, they've expressed worries of retaliation from the applicants. I'm not sure which neighbors will show up today, but I'm, but I am worried that they may not choose to do so. Because of fear that the applicant may harass them or show up at their homes. Question for you all, don't answer it now. Is a patio an accessory structure and therefore is it subordinate to the main structure with the zoning language that you specify that it may? Uh, accessory structures may not be greater than forty percent of the main structure, just food for thought. So I'm following along on the two thousand eleven plans. There's been exponential expansion of all of what seems incongruent, mostly recently with the original special apartment. I certainly appreciate this business and the service it's bought to the city. Our brewery culture provides a special distinction and tone to the city. It attracts visitors. It's a great amenity for East Hampton. But I'm concerned about the impact that twenty-five. Moving to seventy-five parking spaces and now beyond, potentially doubling into the hundreds. How that's gonna affect the neighborhood in terms of traffic? This is a long way from a farm brewery with a retail-only component. It's a long way from a small tasting room and it's a long way from a small indoor. It's a long way from a small tasting room, and it's a long way from a small indoor stage for music. While previous special permits have allowed for outdoor music, I don't think they have this specific enough. There's a difference between ambient music while enjoying a beer to loudly amplified concerts three plus days a week. And to that end, the language around noise abatement is not explicit enough and frankly is not being followed or enforced. This brings me to. The final requirement for all of your special permits. That you need to possess adequate measures to ensure that the site will not constitute a nuisance via noise pollution or visual fragancy. Flagrancy. Let's talk about visual flagrancy for a second. The bike tracks are distraction. My opinion is that the applicant needs to determine what the use of this property is going to be, and adjacent parcels for that matter. Is this a brewery or an amusement park? The two thousand eleven permit needs to be the basis for what comes after. A primary use needs to be clearly established. There should not be multiple secondary uses of this property and the adjacent parcels. Which frankly were supposed to be used for complerter uses, i.e. hopfields. These tracks that we see are visual flagrancies. I understand this is contained a separate parcel, but I think that utilizing that separate parcel to create these other bike tracks and. Dog parks, it's a zoning loophole, and it's not even thinly veiled one. I'm almost done here. Noise is a significant concern. Music from the brewery can be heard at homes on Clap Street and Arcadia Wildlife Sanctuary. In fact, I think many of the people here today did not even receive notices because they're so far away. Noise mitigation is not being applied, is insufficient. The operating volume is too loud. You may want to consider encasing the entire brewery in plexiglass. Kidding, not kidding. Mrs. Arvis, my valued colleague, I think the neighbors in the area, to your point earlier. Have a definite ongoing expectation for outdoor music. They hear it every night. The fact that a resident or residents or half a mile away, not even a butters, need to come to this meeting is concerning. It brings attention to item two with on on your list of of items that are considered a special permit. Which is to protect the butters and city amenities. The tone and tenor of a residential farming area with a nature preserve next to it needs to be protected by any special permit as it permits to noise. Thanks for your time. I appreciate the work you do here, and I am signing off.
Thank you very much, Counselor Zaret. Before I move on, I just, again, we're not deliberating, but I just want to make one comment. We've had two requests to just just. Consider this right off the bat. As I mentioned, because we don't have quorum, that can't be done. It's something that could be discussed at the next meeting, just so you're aware of that. Who wants to be next? I see Laura F. Name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Laura Fisher. I live at sixty-one Clap Street. Which is approximately half a mile north of the brewery. I just wanted to comment and say that I had previously submitted a written letter. To the planning board about my concerns. However, that letter. Was in response to the language of the special permit application, and it did not address. These numerous other concerns. I I sort of wrote that letter based only. On the language of the special permit application, so I really would like to amend that and comment on some of these other uses. But I'll proceed. Good evening. I'll keep my comments brief so that others may speak. And I refer the board, the preliminary letter I submitted through the city planner yesterday for more detail on this matter and my concerns. I also want to take a moment and say that I'm fearful in coming forward and participating in this public forum. Based on my interactions with the applicant. To date and numerous credible stories I've heard from various residents in town about his aggressive. Anti-social and confrontational behavior. I urge his attorneys and this board to underscore the importance of civility and process. And to make clear that retaliative and harassing behavior of participants in this forum and hearing will not be tolerated. My partner and I live at sixty-one Clap Street on the corner of Fort Hill Road. And Clap Street. Our property, a historic home which sits on twenty-point-five acres, much of it prime farmland. Is nearly half a mile north of the brewery. We are not considered a butters or interested parties. For the purposes of the planning board's notification requirements. Between my home and the brewery is a large field and a stand of trees. Again, we are close to half a mile away. We are significantly impacted by the brewery's operations. Specifically, we experience unmitigated, extremely loud music several nights each week. It was a very unpleasant surprise when we first began to hear the live music this spring. I tried to address this issue with the applicant in person. In a friendly manner, as a neighbor, as I outlined in my letter, which I again refer you to. I respectfully request that this board deny the applicant's request, or alternatively that you continue the proceedings until the pending lawsuit against the applicant is resolved. In any event, the applicant should be required to bring his properties into compliance before this board even considers proposed operational expansion. Which, to be clear, has already happened. And is one of the reasons my partner and I are forced to listen to unmitigated amplified music up to four nights a week. We also have significant concerns about traffic. And its impacts on our narrow country road, a road that has no shoulder and significant pedestrian traffic. And I'll include here also that it seems that runoff from the brewery property has eroded the side of Fort Hill Road. Which further diminishes the carrying capacity of that road. The applicant approaches this board tonight in bad faith and with unclean hands. To bring tonight's application without addressing the numerous additional outstanding zoning violations on this property and the neighboring property. Is an attempt to circumvent pending litigation by the city in which the applicant is a defendant. And which alleges numerous zoning ordinance violations. The lawsuit recounts. What are now multiple years of opportunities the applicant has had to work amicably. With the city and rectifying his continued noncompliance. The applicant is, in a sense, requesting forgiveness instead of permission. By virtue of the fact that he has already expanded his patio area. The time for the applicant to proceed in this manner is long past. To allow this request to go forward would tell business owners in this city. That our municipal procedures, regulations and ordinances can be flouted and ignored. This disregard for procedure would be concerning in and of itself. It is made worse by the fact that the applicant is currently running for mayor of our city. His behavior is illustrative of a complete disregard for civility and process. If and when this board does consider the applicant's request, I urge you to take seriously the impact that the live music has on me and my neighbors. The applicant applicant is frequently allowing bands to play in what is permitted as his parking lot. The sound is unreasonably loud for us due to the fact that the speakers directly face my home. There is no mitigation, and the topography beyond the stand of trees on his property essentially amplifies the noise. We often hear the music in our home with the windows shut and with an air conditioner running. The applicant should be required to mitigate the noise as required in his earlier permit. And as I requested of him in person months ago. I have taken numerous decibel readings. Both from my home and from the source of the music, and it is routinely above eighty-five decibels at the noise source. I have recordings of the noise at the source as well as from my home, some of which I have previously shared with city officials. This level of noise without any mitigation is not at all what we expected when we moved in half a mile away from the applicant. It is a nuisance, and it interferes with our enjoyment of our otherwise rural property. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm hopeful that you'll take seriously the requests that I and my neighbors are making.
Thank you very much, Alora. Before you go, I hope you're still there. I wanted to ask, did you attempt any? To contact the police about this at any point? I think I read that in your letter.
Yeah, so I had a few, on a few occasions contacted the police. I was basically told there's nothing they can do, and the few times that they did say that they would send someone over, nothing changed. So we stopped contacting them. And in any event, I don't think it's incumbent upon me to call the police four nights a week.
All right, thank you very much for your commentary. Anyone else? Okay, I think I saw Melissa just a little before Ellen. So Melissa?
Hi, thanks. Melissa Knible, seventeen Fort Hill Road. My husband, John. We did present a letter to the planning board. I know you don't have time to read all of them now, but I would just please encourage you to to read that letter. But I did want to add, in in addition to our concerns outlined in that letter. That simply even the application itself for the special permit is is false. He's indicating the request to have a special permit for the use of the adjoining eight acres for a BMX pipe path. And it's been used exclusively by him for motorized bicycle bicycles, you know, motorbikes. So I I think that's a huge difference, BMX versus a motorized bike from a noise concern. I appreciate so much, you know, Owen being here and the other neighbors being here. I too have. A bit of anxiety about publicly saying anything. Our previous neighbor next door was threatened verbally, so you know, I'm a little bit fearful about potential retribution as well. And I just want to emphasize a point that I I made in in the letter in that if he is this. Arrogant to be so noncompliant with what we can see visually. My questions and my concerns are is how is the business itself being operated, and I really question. The legality and the compliance that he's maintaining with the liquor license. Unfortunately, we have had an experience of of someone just last week leaving Fort Hill. Extremely drunk and and getting into a near fatal accident. So, you know. I would encourage you to ensure that you're also checking in with your colleagues at the licensing board. The police and other organizations within the city. To check to see if there's other compliance issues around this business before considering, again, everyone else's concern about allowing him to expand this business even further. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your commentary. And then Ellen Schramm, hopefully I didn't pronounce that incorrectly.
You pronounce it perfectly. That's actually my wife, Ellen. My name is Hunter Kyle, K E I L. Along with my wife, I, we own thirty-five Fort Hill Road, which is. I believe either the closest to butter or the second closest to butter to the brewery. We bought the house in two thousand fifteen. We've previously not in a public way engaged with this debate, which has been going on since we bought it. You know, there were some personal reasons. There are also some professional reasons for me that I've tried to stay out of it. I've recently been shown some documents and had some conversations which have. Convinced me to become more engaged. The the noncompliance, I find frankly unbelievable with the documents I've seen, and I I'd just like to put that out there. I do not have a a sense of the details in the way that some of the people here do, and so I'm not going to get too far into it. I mostly just wanted to have my voice be heard a little bit. I did want to say that from our perspective. The fact that we haven't showed up at these forums does not mean we've been happy as neighbors. We have not. It's made us question our ownership of this house, the value of our house, whether long-term this is somewhere we can be. In particular, traffic concerns me incredibly. We have a two, two and a half year old son. You might have seen me run out of this meeting at one point because he woke up. You know, when he became of an age where he could walk, we felt the need to put up a fence. The traffic is not solely due to the brewery, but is absolutely true that it is. Much more intense when the brewery is open. And so I just want to bring that up as a particular concern. I don't know anything personally about the threats that have been mentioned, but I also find that concerning. And so I I anticipate I might have more to say at future meetings. I wanted to just generally speak a few words at this one. Thank you. And we we'd like to support our neighbors who we have had multiple conversations with and. We agree with frankly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your coming out and speaking this time. Do we have anyone else that wishes to speak? I'm not seeing any cameras. Oh, there you go, me. I think that's Kathy's tablet.
Yep, Kathy Trueheart, thirteen Fort Hill Road. Now, you read my letter, but I do have a couple of things I'd like to add. One. About the the sides of the roads, they have, if you go on to Fort Hill Road and before you go down the hill. Towards the brewery, if you look to the right, there's a there's a divot there, like you can see they they, there's a. Culvert there, I think. I don't know if it's cement or not, but it's been there. Over twenty years, because I've owned this house over twenty years. It's been there, and the other side had the same thing. At the beginning of the hill, it's completely gone now. Where his driveway is, it's completely gone. A little bit further, it's gone. But if you go down further past his property, you'll see the continuation of where. The the continuation of it, like what's supposed to be there, you can see at the bottom. It there, but nothing on the top. It's all gone. So when you go to look at it, look down by where the bridge is, and you'll see the gully on both sides. But then you won't see it up further on the side of the brewery anymore. It's gone, completely gone. So if you could look at that, when you look at it, that's what I was trying to explain about. The water runoff, and you'll see on the side of that road by the brewery, it is completely deteriorating on that side of that road. The next thing is. He has a bike track on the right-hand side of the brewery. And then he has the motocross on the left-hand side of the brewery. So he's got one that he uses for his bikes, and he's got one he uses for that motorcycle. Now, the the dirt bike that he's driving, I called the police. One day, you should look for a police report. The brewery was open, and there was people lined up along the fence. And everybody was taking a turn riding the motorcycle around the track. So if that's for personal use, how come the people from the brewery were riding the bike around the track? That's just a question I I have to ask. I also gave the police a copy of the picture of him. Driving his dirt bike down our road with no helmet, and you can clearly see it's a dirt bike. So that's a concern of mine. He really doesn't care about our laws here, really straight up there. The next thing is the plexiglass. He does have music outside, and it is loud. And the plexiglass was never put up, but he does have outdoor music, so please have someone look into that again. Because we were promised plexiglass. And then the other thing is. I just want to say, he does come to your home after you filed the complaint or said anything about calling the, or if you've called the cops. He will show up at your doorstop, knock on the door, talk to you at first, and then get very irritated and start yelling. So we're all used to that. But that's basically all I wanted to put in on top of my letter. So I just wanted to clarify the gullies on either side of the road. They were both there for over twenty years. I mean, well before I moved in here. But you can clearly see it on the right, but on his side of the road, the top is completely gone, and on the bottom by the bridge. The gully, the culvert is still there. So I just wanted to clear that up, so when you go to look at it, you can really see the difference. And his driveway kept washing out, and he had to keep building up his driveway. Because the water that was supposed to be in that gully kept taking his driveway out. Just to let you know, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. You know, I do recall seeing in the documents several images of. The bike riding that you're referring to. Curtis, can you confirm those images are also available to the public in the in the folders that you?
Yeah, they they follow the same file path that I described earlier, which is, again, if you if you just Google. East Hampton Planning Board, or go to the city of East Hampton's website and navigate to Planning Board. At the bottom right of the page, there's a, there's like a little header that says view current applications, and it's got a subcategory called twenty-twenty-one applications. In that, in on the page that results from that, you go to Fort Hill number thirty, and then there's a folder called Correspondence. There's a folder under that correspondence folder that just says pictures, and it includes these pictures that are named.
And and it's very helpful. Thank you for giving context as to exactly what those pictures were. I very much appreciate that. It's helpful. You know, I'll tell you, Attorney Lane, before we go on here, that there's a lot of trust issues clearly we're going to need to cover. Let's talk, anyone next here? Anyone else? Star six or star nine to raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone, Curtis. Jeff, you see anyone, let me know.
I don't see anyone. I see some people who have been muted the whole time. If you're having any technical difficulties. Feel free to call me in my office at four one three.
I would check Joyce's, Joyce's is muted right now, and I don't. Joyce's is muted right now and I don't know if she knows how to unmute that. So if you unmute her, she might be able to speak to you.
We can't unmute her on our end. We can ask her to unmute and I will try that now. It'll give her a little pop up that she can click on, but if that.
I can unmute. This is Joyce Patskovich, fifteen Fort Hill Road. And right now I think the neighbors are saying enough and other people from way across town. That Sam, thank you and Mr. Owen, thank you. Appreciate your comments. And that's it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it and I'm glad we, thank you Kathy for letting us know that I just needed to speak. Is there anyone else? Okay, so a couple of things I want to talk about about public speak. We are not ending public speak here. We really haven't had the official plan sent to us. It would be inappropriate to limit you to this one opportunity to speak, given that you haven't actually even seen the plan yet. This is a preliminary. What we're doing here with this public speaking with everything we're doing is trying to give Attorney Lane. Enough information to take back and come back with a plan in hope to address all of these issues. What's going to happen as we go through that process at the next meeting, we're going to talk about scheduling that in a moment. I want to assure everyone that spoke here, there will be another opportunity to speak, especially once that information is delivered for everyone. So if anyone was missed here, there will be another definitely another chance to pitch in. And I'm going to try to continue. There are a lot of letters. I suppose it is possible. I might not get to all of them, but I will try to continue. To put a few into the public record personally and recommend to everyone and make sure that the link is shown so everyone can go see that information that's there. And be assured we are reading those. They're important and we really appreciate them. One other thing. There's been some discussion. Threats. This is a difficult thing. The planning board, the truth is, the planning board has no authority. When it comes to that, of course, I'm confident I can speak for the entire board that such behavior is reprehensible. And none of us approve, stand against it. But the truth is, I can't really make any kind of statement saying that we won't allow it because we have no authority and it would be misrepresenting to you. That we had some authority to stop it. The behavior that's like that, if someone's threatening you, my recommendation is you take police action, take civil action. That's the appropriate response to that. I'm certainly disappointed to hear that that kind of behavior is happening between developers and neighbors that is absolutely not what we want to hear and it doesn't bode well. But I can tell you that that is not the purview of the planning board. So I'm hoping that if this is real, if that's really happening and I tend to trust you on this. That you take that to civil authorities to, you know, to you sue or you go to the police. All right, let's make sure we have a rundown. Curtis Jeff, do you think that we've missed anything that we need to give to Attorney Lane as a sort of a list priority? The only thing I can think of is an actual traffic study. I think that that may come up as as a part of the discussions. Is there anything else Curtis or Jeff that you think that we should highlight for Attorney Lane?
I just want to make sure, I guess, you know, it has been mentioned, I think, remember Danny as the playing board member. You know, I talked about drainage and stormwater. So just, you know, the the importance of those calculations and that information being. Compiled and provided. Related to this and just if you're going here in terms of timeline or schedule. You know, what I've heard so far, my understanding has been that there's there's some understanding that September thirtieth is. A deadline by which information will be completed, but I want to make sure that if we're talking about that, that. Submitting information to us on September thirtieth and and getting. The hearing continued on October sixth is not sufficient time. For the city engineer to review it, for anyone to review it, for members of the public to review it. So I just want to play that out a little bit. In terms of a timeline, the other part that relates to timeline is if the applicant chooses to. Talk about the additional uses on the adjacent parcel, then we want to backtrack enough time to have. A new legal ad, a butter's notice go out within the fourteen days. So I just want to factor those couple of things in as we talk about, maybe a date to continue this too.
So Attorney Lane, Mr. Swanson. What do you think? It seems that, you know, October sixth, but we need more time, Jeff. Is that what you're saying? Are you thinking later in October?
Well, I think like the my understanding of the standstill agreement is that the information, like the commitment from the applicant is that information will be completed by September thirtieth and submitted. And I think that's fine. That's a good goal, but I I just want to make sure that, you know, that's a Thursday. I believe there's a holiday somewhere in there. I don't know when, you know. Whenever you're going to call it these days Indigenous People's Day or Columbus Day. So I just want to be clear, there's a board that. Based on what I know right now, I would not suggest the first meeting in October. I think it should be the second to allow enough time for. Last time I looked, I thought it was October eleventh, actually. So maybe it's not that week I was thinking, but I think. The if I understand the board's schedule Curtis, it would be October twentieth would be, maybe that's the reasonable date to be talking about here.
I see October nineteenth.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I was off by data, October nineteenth.
Do we have anything? I mean, that's pretty far out, so it's hard to tell, but is there anything else on the agenda that you're aware of that far out?
It'll be a quiet season also. I mean, that's when we we're out of the summer season, so.
Attorney Lane, an expectation that the materials will be submitted at September thirtieth and October nineteenth at six P M would be. The next planning board meeting. Do you think that you and Mr. Swanson can meet that deadline? Those deadlines?
I believe we can. That's the discussion we've had, so. Certainly, and certainly we are now committed. In the standstill agreement of litigation to to comply by September thirtieth, so we'll have submissions in. City planning is saying it'll need through the nineteenth before we have another public hearing. I we're in agreement with that as well.
Okay, Curtis?
In the interest of supplying both the applicant and members of the public with information on how to access any updates to this, that'll come from city applicant or the public. I kind of wanted to showcase how to access the project folder on our new website. Can I lead a brief discussion on that?
Brief, please.
I promise. Can everyone see the city website here?
Yep.
Okay, go to governments, boards and committees. Scroll on down to the planning board. Down here you can see planning board applications and you've got your two categories here. You go to twenty-one, twenty twenty-one planning board applications. You go to this. Slightly dull looking page. You can see a number of applications up to and including Fort Hill number thirty. Fort Hill number thirty has the documents referenced this evening, including the agenda for tonight's meeting, the plans as submitted, the narrative as submitted. And the technical memo that has been referenced to the part of this meeting. These are all publicly available and will be updated or with new additions as. As new materials received. Additionally, we can see this folder here, which is correspondence. These are the public comments received for this meeting. And this other subfolder contains all of the photos. You can feel free to navigate this here and if you have any questions at any time, feel free to contact the planning department at four one three five two nine fourteen hundred, extension one fifty.
Thank you very much. That's excellent. All right, Attorney Lane, do you have any question? Actually, hold on, before I ask that, I see Jeff has something to add.
Sorry. In your previous question was whether there was anything else. Not discussed and I just wanted to, I guess. Suggest that special events and how the owner plans, plans and organizes. And deals with special events probably seems really relevant since there is one coming up in September, which will occur before the next. Scheduled hearing and I think it's important because it's come up a couple of times. I think. It's part of what appears to be the brewery operations. I think getting some clarity on on that makes sense and then, you know. There are some, I think there's, because we're going retroactively. There is some pretty straightforward ways to calculate the number of cars that the site can currently accommodate and the arrangement that's preferred. You know, I think so. I just want to be clear when we come back that, you know, the plan should really be accurate and I think we, the owner can provide some. Some real time data on on how it's being used. And I think that's our primary goal here in terms of the brewery use. Is to identify what it what its operation is in twenty twenty-one. And versus what it was approved in twenty seventeen and this is the chance to to deal with those changes and find out if there's more conditions. Or other issues that we can. Have to mitigate to mitigate the changes. So I just want to make sure that's clear. I think that's been articulated. I just wanted to make sure that that was kind of clear and that's definitely moving forward.
Okay, that's a great idea. Thank you. You know, and I want to ask you a question, but I wanted to say one thing first. Hopefully I remember what it was. Yes, it was about the video. To the planning board, I strongly recommend you contact Curtis and get access to the two thousand seventeen video. I think these things are on East Hampton Media. But Curtis has it directly because that's where and I'm certainly going to be reviewing it. That's where we're going to listen to ourselves back in two thousand seventeen where we were talking about. The screen, the Plexiglas live performances. I think there's a little bit of, my memory is just a little fuzzy back then. So we need to review that and make sure that we know exactly what we stated. I strongly recommend that everyone go back and rewatch that video.
Jeff, should I should I put those up on the the website?
That's fine. Yeah, I think that'd be fair. Yes.
I'll add a new folder then tomorrow that includes all a couple of relevant materials for the twenty seventeen proceedings, which include the recordings. Or links, I think they're YouTube links as well as the minutes that were approved for those meetings as well.
That's very handy and it's going to help us all a lot to really make sure we know exactly.
I'll link it to all of the the relevant parties here, members of the public. You're going to have to access them the same way that I just kind of walked through. Again, feel free to call with any questions. My phone goes through to my my email, so.
And then my last thing, Mr. Attorney Lane was, do you have any questions that you need from us in direction at this point? Do you feel like you? You understand everything that was requested? It was a lot.
Thank you. I've been, I've been taking copious notes, but I'll certainly. Get a recording of of tonight. So no, I don't have any other specific questions and I can certainly reach out to to city planning as we prepare the next submission.
And Mr. Swanson, same question to you.
I'm committed to the September thirty date. I can't speak to a lot of the things that were. You know, reviewed this evening, but. From a technical and engineering standpoint, I have every intention of having the. Having the the technical work done by September thirty.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, in that case, I think that we're looking for a motion to continue. The Fort Hill special permit to October nineteenth at six o'clock. Do I have such a motion? We either come from Danny or Harry.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to take that as a yes that you motion to continue.
Did it before for everyone's reference, usually second or third.
It's okay. So you're confirming that you are making a motion to continue Fort Hill, the Fort Hill special permit to October nineteenth at six o'clock. Yes, and then I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, Harry? Danny? And I am an I. Everyone, I'd like to thank you very much. It's a difficult issue. We will see you again on October nineteenth and as both Jeff and Curtis stated. They're available in the planning department for questions. Do you have them?
One quick thing, I apologize. It's not related to the votes. You already cast your bill. It's fine. I did. I did want to make sure that folks are aware that there are. Two playing board members who are absent and their their process is to watch a recording of the meeting. And sign an affidavit that they have done so and then they will be joining the group on October nineteenth. And so I just wanted to. Clarify that that's our, that's the process that we have available to us that members are available, are allowed to miss one meeting. As long as they, you know, you know. Sign a document that says they've record, they've listened to the recording. So I just I just thought of that. I just wanted to make sure that there'll be two new playing board members joining us on October nineteenth. So that was that.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, so now that that's closed, are there any announcements, Jeff or Curtis or Harry or Danny?
No.
Okay, in that case, I am looking for another motion. This one is to adjourn. One of you has to say. Okay, now I'm looking for a second.
A second.
All right, all in favor, Danny? Harry? And I am an I. Have a lovely evening, everyone.